Good evening, I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting for Monday, February tenth, two thousand twenty. I ask that you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So as you may have remembered from last week, or now you've realized that we are live streaming by our own Dartmouth High Media Department, but this will also be broadcast through DCTV several times over the course of the week. I ask that everyone silence your cellphones if you have them with you so that it doesn't interrupt the meeting. Roll call, please.
Kathleen Amorall.
Here.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
Carol Karafotis.
Here.
John News.
Yep.
So the first thing on our, first item on our agenda is public comment. And so we've allotted about ten minutes for a public comment from the audience. We only ask that if you come up, you speak to something that's on the agenda and that you state your name and make your comments as brief as you can. Do you want to run up? Okay. None. The next thing on our agenda is the approval of minutes, and so I will entertain a motion to accept the regular session minutes of January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I also will entertain a motion to approve the executive session minutes of the same night, January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty.
So move Madam Chair with the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is completed.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. So next we have, we're grateful to have Brendan here, Brendan Rico. He's our student rep from the high school to update us on what's going on here at the high school.
Thank you. So Dartmouth High School once again had several Scholastic Art Award winners. Silver Key Award winners included Claudia Castro for photography, Piper Harrison for photography, and Kenzie Waskowitz for ceramics. Honorable mention recognition was awarded to Jonathan Dearman for photography, Nate Jakart for photography, Catherine Reno for painting, and Kenzie Waskowitz for portfolio and drawing and illustration. Congratulations to all. Last week during the pace period, the Business and Computer Science Department, as well as Unified Arts Department, met with each grade at DHS to preview course offerings for the next school year. After vacation, all students in grades nine through eleven will begin making their course requests for the next school year. Last Friday, members of the Principal's Advisory Council met to discuss the seven-plus pace schedule. This was the first step in soliciting feedback on the implementation of the new schedule. All students and faculty members will be surveyed in the coming weeks as the year progresses. On Friday, February fourteenth, at two PM, members of the DHS National Honor Society will be hosting the annual Valentine's Day Dance at the Dartmouth Council on Aging. It is the biggest service project that NHS takes on each year, and it allows DHS students to provide our senior citizens with a fun-filled event. Congratulations to the boys and girls basketball team, as well as to the hockey team. Each is already qualified for postseason play. Also, congratulations to the hockey team, who won a two-one contest over Bourne High School yesterday at the Dunkin' Donuts Center in Providence. On Saturday, February twenty-second, the DSMA will be holding their annual indoor percussion home show. Both our indoor percussion, as well as our color guard, will be performing, and we wish them best, we wish them both the best of luck. On Sunday, March first, from eight-thirty AM until twelve-forty-five PM, the dance club, led by Ms. Kelly, will be holding a dance convention fundraiser. The event is open to dancers ages seven and older, beginner, intermediate, and advanced levels. Dancers will start the morning with a warm-up, followed by three dance classes. The cost is fifty dollars per dancer, and anyone interested should call or email Ms. Kelly. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, but you certainly can leave if you want to.
Thanks.
I know we're exciting, but.
Lots of great things happening.
Thank you very much for all of that.
Good job.
So, the best part of the night is we have a presentation. Our spotlight on kids this meeting is Joseph DeMello Elementary School, and so we have Katie Paveo and Liz Coria here to present the Spotlight on Kids. Welcome.
So I would like to invite our DeMello friends to come on up, my friends who are gonna work with us tonight. So, good evening, everyone. Mrs. Coria and I would like to thank you all for the opportunity tonight to spotlight some of the truly fabulous work that's being done at the DeMello School. As this is a spotlight on kids, my goal is to do very little of the talking tonight. With that being said, we'd like to start off with a video that will lead us into tonight's topic of writing. But before I hit play, or ask Mr. Galishaw to hit play, I would be remiss if I didn't give a giant thank you to Mrs. Liz Vosie, who is our instructional tech teacher extraordinaire, because she really was able to take the vision that Mrs. Coria and I had for these videos tonight that you're gonna watch and make them a reality. So, Mr. Galishaw, whenever you're ready.
At DeMello School, we are writers!
I like Writing Workshop because it always keeps me engaged in the new stuff that I learn.
I like Writing Workshop because it introduces new pieces to the writer and allows the writer to look more than like flashes.
I like Writing Workshop because it gives me a sense of independence when we learn a lesson and then we go off to do it.
I like Writing Workshop because I can write about anything I want, and I think I'm a better writer because of it.
I like Writing Workshop because I like the white fiction story. It helps me write though.
I like Writing Workshop because I like practicing my letters and getting better every day.
I like writing because when you write something you don't know you weren't how to write.
I like Writing Workshop because it gives you a chance to be creative, creative, and it helps you become a better writer.
I like Writing Workshop because you can be really creative and because you can let your mind run free.
Even though I've only been teaching first grade for three years, it's incredible the amount of writing stamina that these students have developed. These six and seven-year-olds are able to stay on task and write for a half hour straight. And the most incredible thing is that they enjoy this writing and develop a sense of independence.
So the writing program this year has really helped our students develop a love of writing. They're more engaged, they're willing to take chances, and they are really proud of themselves to see their growth from the beginning of the unit till the end of the unit.
And I'm extremely pleased to see that my students are able to structure an essay properly and to do it quickly and thoroughly.
We have really seen an increase in quality and quantity with our third-grade writers. Students are given many opportunities to flash draft, which allows them to practice different styles of writing. For example, we're currently working on persuasive speeches. Students have experimented and played around with problems in our school, class, and even the world around us. They've been able to gather more information through research, as well as creating and conducting surveys with our, with other third-grade classes.
And we've noticed the most growth when the students had their first flash draft in the persuasive unit. We just finished up a nonfiction informational unit where they wrote expert pieces, and we are blown away by the organization of the pieces and their use of transition words, which we really focused on in the previous unit.
We're really excited to see how much more they will grow as the year progresses.
One great aspect of our writing workshop is the shared time at the end. It's just a couple of minutes long, but it's a great confidence booster for students to take pride in the progress they made in workshop that day.
One of the amazing things about Lucy Cawkins Writing Workshop is the stamina that kids come in from fourth grade with us and watching them even grow throughout the fifth grade year. The amount and the quantity and quality of children's writing is something to behold. I've been doing this for almost twenty years, and to watch what kids are doing today is amazing.
I just wanna share the amazing writing that my students do, and they've grown so much since the beginning, and it's amazing the kind of writing that they are producing each and every day.
I am a writer.
I'm a writer.
I am a writer.
I'm a writer. I'm a writer.
I'm a writer.
I am a writer.
I am a writer.
I am a writer.
I'm a writer.
We are the writers of DeMello School.
At DeMello School, we are writers!
So as you can see from the video, the addition of the Lucy Cawkins Units of Studies has truly helped us become a community where we grow writers. And I use the term "grow writers" because that's truly what we do. We take the amazing work that's being done down, done down the street at the Cushman School, and we build on it in a very strategic progression that's laid out throughout the units. If you look at the learning progressions, which I think should be up there, that you've, and I've included in your packets, you'll find that each grade level feeds on what the students have already done and learned, and it helps them to grow further in that area. And I've also included in your packet some of the checklist that our students use when they're analyzing their own writing with a critical eye to determine if their piece has met the grade level expectations. And, Mr. Galishaw, if you kind of flip through them, what you'll see is if you zoom in on the first box under Structure, which deals with leads, you see that our kids are growing on what they've done until they have a beginning in first grade where they are trying to write a beginning to, in the fifth grade where they are showing what was happening and where, and also is giving, giving clues to what will later become a problem for the main character by the time they are, they are fifth graders. And while we've chosen to focus on the narrative unit tonight, these progressions and checklists exist for all the units of study in writing and in reading that we take our students through.
And so, on to the most important people of the night. Tonight, we've brought students from each grade level with us who are kind enough to share their narrative pieces from early this year with you. We chose to share our narrative writing as it is very clearly, clearly shows the progression of writing, the growth over time that these students make from the time they are first graders right through to fifth grade. We asked them to record themselves reading their stories, as we know that standing in front of a crowd can often make for daunting work. And we want to be sure that you can hear all the fabulous things they've written about. They were gracious enough to join us up here tonight, to help us be brave enough to speak to you, and also to answer any questions that you might have after hearing their pieces. We've highlighted the overall progression of each grade level before they come on camera, and I think you'll agree that each of these students has very successfully executed the task with pride. I'd like to ask each of our students to introduce themselves to you, and then we'll hear what they've written.
I am Bennett Kircher, second grade.
I am Lucas Souza, and I am in fourth grade.
I am Nora Kelly, and I am in third grade.
I am Ella Mo, and I'm in fifth grade.
We also have Juniper Pogash, fabulous first grader. All right, Mr. Galishaw, whenever you're ready.
One time I went to the zoo with my brother and my grandparents. The zoo was called the Roger Williams Zoo. And I saw cheetahs. It was fun. And there was zebras next door from the cheetah. And it wanted to eat the zebra. It kind of looked like there was a stampede.
Me, Mom, Dad, and Audrey, here are the waves crash against the beach as we walked towards it. Then the beach and the ocean come into view. I sprinted to the water. "Let's go skimboarding," I shouted at, as, at Dad as I ran toward the water. Splash, splash, me and Dad jumped into the water. We swam out to where the big waves were. "Here comes a big one," Dad yelled. "Hmm?" I started to say, "But then, splash!" "Ah!" I yelled. Crash, I hit the, the sand hard. "Can we go skimboarding?" I asked. "Sure," replied Dad. But then something caught my eye, some creature of the deep. I went, I wandered toward the thing. It was a horseshoe crab! "Wow," I muttered to myself. Those things have been here since dinosaur time. Splash! The horseshoe crab was carried out to sea by a wave. Dad came back with the skimboard. Then he placed the skimboard on the water and said, "You first." I bounced myself on the skimboard. Splash! A wave lifted the skimboard off the ground and into the water. Then Dad pushed me with all his might. "Yahoo!" I yelled as I sailed across the shallow water. And then my board slowed to a stop. "It's almost time to leave," yelled Mom from a distance. "Time for our last and best wave," Dad said. We went into the deepest part of the water and waited. Five, four, three, two, one, rush! Eight waves came speeding toward us, and before I knew it, I was going from tip to top, from top to top of the waves. One of the waves was facing the wrong way. I fell off my board. It was a hot day and took some tackles. "Come on, come on," I shouted to my family, going as fast as slippers could take you. "All the slippers are too big," my sister Claire shouted in reply. "I'll help you," I called back and went around the pool to the closet. The small room had dim lighting and all the stuff you would need to have a good time at the beach and pool. Stand-up paddleboard paddles, sand toys, life jackets, and of course, slippers. My mom and I helped my sister find the smallest pair of slippers in the closet. We hurried back outside to the breezy tropical sunlight. The cool breeze reminded me how hot it was in the closet. I stepped slowly into the cool, into the pool, but at the same time warm pool. I felt my slippers try to float up to the surface of the water as they started swimming. Suddenly, my face dropped under. Blub, 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 I floated back up to the top. "Oh no," I shouted, standing up the shallow water of the pool. "Can you help me?" I asked my mom. "Sure," she said. "Come on over." I clumsily half-floored, half-locked over to where my mom was standing. I tried to kick my legs the right way, and my mom told me what to do. It was still so hard. "Let's play swimming lessons," declared Mom. She was having a hard time, too. "Who's going to teach us?" I asked. Of course, the answer was her mom. She had us go to the side of the pool and hold on kicking our legs. "What's next?" I asked, and that, that second, our dad came and walked into the pool, flashing water everywhere. "I know," Claire shouted, "He could be the lifeguard." So that's what it was. Our dad was the lifeguard, our mom was the swimming lessons teacher, and Claire and I were the students. The next step of swimming lessons was swimming across the shallow end of the pool with our slippers on. My feet felt draggy as I tried to kick them across the pool. It was so much harder than it seemed. When I came up out of the water to take a breath, I saw my dad float across the shimmering blue water on a pool floor. "It's so hard to swim with slippers on," I announced, and dove back under for another try. We kept going again and again until I finally got the hang of swimming with slippers. I want to try to swim across the whole pool, even the deep end and back, I said. "Okay, try it out." My parents agreed. I tried it out. As I got closer to the deep end, my feet started to feel groggy. My head popped above the water for a breath of air. I kept, I kept my head above the water and treaded water for a few moments, and then dove back under. My arms sliced through the water as I got closer and closer to the wall. When I got to the wall, I put my feet against it and pushed off. I hadn't realized it, but my feet weren't feeling groggy anymore. I was learning how to do it. It was now I came up for a breath. "Guys," I shouted, "I can do it. I know how to use slippers." Then I dove back under and climbed back to the starting point, the shallow end of the turquoise water pool. Crash, this was very scary for Ed and Max. Let me tell you what happened. Ed and Max had packed, had packed everything they needed to go on a trip to Florida. They were at the airport. "Are you ready to go to Florida?" Max questioned Ed. "Yes," exclaimed Max. A little while later, Ed and Max stepped in the plane. "Wow," said Max, "These seats are comfy." "They sure are," said Ed. "Back, the plane will start to lift off. Buckle your seatbelts," the comm said, and the plane took off. Ed and Max were sound asleep when Crash startled both of the brothers, startled both of the brothers woke up. "What just happened?" Max said confused. "I don't know," replied Ed. Then both of the brothers stepped close to the door and opened it. "Oh no," said Max. "Oh my God," yelled Max as the brothers stepped out. "We are stranded," Ed said back. The plane had crashed and they were, and they were stranded on an island. "What will we do now?" said Max, a little worried. "How are you supposed to get, get off this island?" Now the brothers were worrying a little more. Then Max saw something under a rock and picked it up. "Oh my God," exclaimed Max, "It's a walkie-talkie." Ed turned it on and, and the both heard a "pff." "Is anyone there?" Ed yelled into the walkie-talkie. Then they heard, "Uh, are you guys one of the survivors from the deadly plane crash?" the voice said. "Yes, yes, we are," said Max into the walkie-talkie. "Okay, we're coming to pick you guys up," the voice hung up. Three hours later. "Help has arrived," yelled Ed. Both of the brothers hopped on the rescue plane, and the rescue team brought them, both, brought them to Florida. The rescue team dropped them off. "Bye," yelled Max over the spinning propellers. When they were gone, Max said, "Next time, can we drive?" Ed had agreed.
Expedition Everest by Ella. What they don't understand is that if you are afraid to go on a ride in Animal Kingdom, you don't have to go. Yeah, I learned that the hard way. We had been exploring Animal Kingdom for a while, but when the biggest ride ever came into view, my older brother Max just had to say, "Can we go on Expedition Everest?" "Hmm, Larson, will you be afraid to go on?" asked my mom, "Because if we, if you are..." "We don't have to go on," said my mom, pointing to the huge ride. "I would say I was scared to, I would say I was too scared if I were you." "Larson is my little brother." "No, I will not be scared," he said with a big smile on his face. My dad put on his hat and said, "Okay then, let's go get in the line." I stared at him and said, "First, where is the line?" "We're gonna find out," he said. It looked like so much fun. I wanted to cut the line to go on. The last time we went, Larson was a baby, and I was too scared to go on, so I had to wait outside with my grandma while my brother, my mom, and my dad had the best time ever. My life goal was to go on that ride and have a good time. We walked around for ages looking for that line. Then we saw it. It looked short from there, but boy, we, we were completely wrong. I, I was actually glad it took a while. When you waited in line, you could see proof that the Sasquatch was real. I wondered why they put it that there. I was pretty sure if it was just for entertainment. Anyways, we went through the old mountain climbing shops. There are jackets, ropes, grabbering hooks, hats, and snow pants. You want TVs, they had them. Best line ever. We finally got to, to the front of the line. I walked up to cart number seven. "Max, you wanna sit with me?" I asked. "Eh, I've done worse," answered Max. "Did you know you could fall off and be stuck in the cave forever?" asked Max. "That's silly." "You can fall off?" I thought. We then got ready to sit in our carts. They looked like old mine carts for when people mined in caves. They were old and dirty for the whole cave thing. Dad sat with Larson and Mom sat with a random boy. This is how it starts. You're super excited to go on, and then you're completely terrified. My stomach was in a knot. I wanted to run all the way back to Massachusetts, but it was too late. We started moving. It made a loud screech, and it jerked forwards. We started slow. "This is not that bad," I thought. We started climbing mountains. I heard screaming ahead of us. "Please stop moving, please stop moving." Sweat was rolling down my cheek. I couldn't tell if it was from being nervous or from the heat. We went from being slow to stopping. "Wait, my wish worked," I thought. Now it was really starting to get hot. The warmer it got, the more worried I felt. I put my hands on the rail to see how high we were, but it burnt my palms. "Okay, it's not that high. If you don't want to go on this ride, jump off," I whispered to myself. "Ella, did you say something?" he smiled. "Are you scared?" "No." Anyways, it was either jump off and hurt yourself, or be scared. Once I chose jumping off, we started moving again. I couldn't make any facial expression. My eyes were locked on the cave we were going into. It was dark. You could hear bats in a slight creak. I started getting, started getting faster and faster. We stopped at broken tracks. When I looked around, there were so many elastic bands and pennies from the nineteen hundreds. "Oh, thank goodness we stopped," I started talking to Max and calming down. "Max, why are there broken tracks?" I asked. "Uh, I haven't been on this ride in a while. Maybe the yeti broke them," he yanked there with a friendly smile. "There's a yeti, too? That explains all that Sasquatch footprints." All of a sudden, it jerked backwards at full speed. We were going backwards. "Oh no, oh no, I know." I looked it down. All I was scared of was losing my hat. I put the bag in front of me and pressed my feet on it. I was still afraid of the ride, but mostly the hat. All of a sudden, I felt like I was going in a loop-de-loop. My head was, of course, still down. I tried to lift my head, but I couldn't. I started screaming, "I can't lift my head." I also screamed something to Max. I do hope he heard it. "Max, you didn't tell me it went backwards. Did you say something, Ella? I can't hear over how much fun I'm having." I wanted to stuff a squirrel down his throat. Of course, I didn't do it, mostly because we're in a cave, and there were no squirrels in my reach. I closed my eyes so hard, almost as if I was tightening braces. All the sweat was flying off my face. I felt bad for the person in front of me. They were in a splash zone. Sweats flew around my brain. "Why did I go on this ride? I don't wanna fall off." "You have a strap, you won't fall. This is all your fault, Max. You stopped going in a loop." When we stopped, I was confused. Did we stop because someone couldn't get in the cart? But someone didn't have trouble getting on a cart. Then a spotlight was on the cave wall. Then it appeared in the spotlight, Sasquatch's shadow. It pounded its chest into the ear-spluttering shriek. The shadow broke rails like they were twins. We started rolling forwards, so many twists and turns, too many to count. We were now in the center of the cave. There was a giant yeti with red eyes. It screeched. I looked in my head in fear, with fear in my eyes. I looked back at Larson thinking, "Poor guy, he must be scared to death." Yeah, I thought that for about two seconds. He wasn't scared at all. He had the most serious face I had ever seen. I couldn't tell if he was paralyzed or bored. I thought bored. I looked back at the yeti. Its fists were swinging around. I closed my eyes. Shortly after, I opened them because I felt daylight. There was a daylight, but we were heading for a huge drop. In that moment, I didn't feel fright. I felt happy and excited. I couldn't- I couldn't scream, I couldn't frown. All I could do was smile. I put my hands in the air. The drop came. It reminded me of the ride Splash Mountain. We were heading for a huge drop. My mom pointed out the Disney castle. It looked so beautiful. Max said, ooh, cool, ah! Right in the middle of his sentence, the drop came and he screamed so loudly. I laughed so hard that day. Today, I was laughing the same way. All the, all of a sudden, I wasn't scared. I was happy and excited. I realized I had fun the whole time. I just let my imagination ruin things that are supposed to be fun. I could feel the wind in my hair cooling me down. I stopped worrying and could only think how amazing this ride was. We stopped. I was sad it was over. That day, I learned you can't live in fear because it doesn't actually protect you from anything. You have to take chances. You guys wanna go on again? Asked Max with a smile on his face. Yeah, let's do it, I said. Then I knew there was plenty of sunshine coming my, my way. Like I said before, the hard way.
As you can imagine, we are so incredibly proud of our students and the writing they've done. You can see that they certainly expand on the volume of writing that they do as they grow, but that the actual stories tend to zoom in, going from an entire day at the zoo to a multi-page story about just one ride and a very full day at Animal Kingdom. So I would like to thank our students one more time for joining us here this evening and also a special thank you, yes. I would also be really remiss if I didn't thank Mrs. Jen Clune, who is our literacy coach, and Mrs. Lisa Reitzes, who held that role before her, for all the hard work that they've done with our teachers to roll out the units of study over the past several years. These units are incredibly dense and they are certainly not something that you can just glance at and do. They require a tremendous amount of preparation and I'm so grateful to our teachers for the work that they've done with Mrs. Clune and Mrs. Reitzes to get us to where we are as a writing community today. And with that, I would like to turn it over to you if you have any questions for my writers or for Mrs. Coria and I.
Wonderful. John, wanna start?
Thank you. Great job to, you know, when you follow what you gave us type of deal, it's obvious that they're following the outline by grade and how it expands from, you know, a day at the zoo to, you know, the, the trip to Animal Kingdom. I nev, I've been to Animal Kingdom a couple of times. I haven't been on Everest either, so don't, no, thank you. Again, that's beyond my realm now, but my congrats, job well done. And thank you for coming and, you know, having the courage and the fortitude and the ability to stand up there and do what you did. I'm very proud of you, all of you.
Excuse me, I will echo that, Mr. News. Boys and girls, what a great job you did tonight. And I know you're just a representative of many other children in your school. Excuse me. Thanks to you and your teachers and your leadership at DeMello School for continuing to focus on the importance of writing. I'm so glad that Lucy Caulkins' work is being continued in the schools. And I love the progression, how we could see from a first grade to a fifth grade, how children progress. And this doesn't just happen. It has to be, and, and you know, intentional. And before I lose my voice, I just wanna say thank you again. Thank you. Great job.
So I'm glad to see the strong writing tradition continue at DeMello. My kids both went to DeMello and learned to become great writers and kids, keep at it. I believe in fourth grade, my youngest did a persuasive letter to the then vice principal and principal complaining that the fifth graders got all the fun. And so the fourth graders should have some fun too. They should have a talent show, which I believe is still an annual tradition at DeMello. So your writing can take you places and it can change things. So keep at it. It's really great to see you doing such good work.
So each and every one of you should be very proud for being up here and sharing your descriptive, wonderful descriptive writing and fabulous reading as well. You got, all of you should be very proud of yourself. I gotta say, I can definitely see the progression in what, what you're sharing with us and what we saw tonight. It's just amazing to, the, I, I connected most with the, the Mount, the Expedition Everest ride. Unlike my colleague, Mr. News, I did have a chance to ride it a few times. And I could actually, I, I was actually there listening, listening to the, the descriptive writing, so, but all of you, great job. And I'm sure this is just a small snapshot of what's going on at the DeMello School. So thank you all very much and to your teachers as well.
Yeah, I mean, I echo what my colleagues have stated. I'm so proud of you for coming out here, just being in this room in front of all of these strange people and sharing your, your.
That's strange.
I know, I start to sweat before I have to talk and so I just really, kudos to you for being so brave to be here in this room and hearing you share your stories was very inspiring and wonderful work. So thank you for being here, all of you.
The last thing I will say is, on that first video when we asked kids, when the kids talk about what they like about Writers Workshop, I, when I first watched the footage that Mrs. Vossi had collected, I said, did you help them with that? And she said, no, I literally, we gave them a sentence frame, what do you, this is what I like about Writers Workshop. And they were so articulate and so, I, I said, this could be like a video for, like to sell Lucy Caulkins, because the kids really, but they really do love the Writers Workshop, the whole part of it. I think, and I was so grateful that our teachers talked about the share and all the different parts of the workshop, because I, we see our kids loving writing. And, and we've always had a strong writing, but I don't know that it's always been the case that our kids have loved to write, but our kids really truly, by and large, love to write. And so we're so grateful, but I said, I'm gonna have to, like, say that that wasn't scripted, because it sounds like we said, this is what we want you to say, but truly, we just said, what do you love about Writers Workshop? And that was what they all came up with. So thank you all very much for, for letting us come up tonight and show off our kids.
She's so sweet. Yay!
That'll show up.
Yay! So you're, you're free to stay, again, like we told our student rep, but you're also free to go and enjoy the rest of your evening. That came out. I don't know what that was.
Yeah. Some button got pushed.
So after all that fun, I understand that there is, I'll wait for some shuffling around, yeah. Afraid to touch this, I knew where that angle came from.
I think it was from the TV. Mr. Galishoff saw the TV up. Blame it on you.
It was like Oz, it was like The Incredible Oz.
Exactly. It's cool.
I would like to follow it up. I understand that we have some news to share. And Dr. Gifford, if you wouldn't mind making a few announcements?
Yes, thank you. A little out of order here, but we thought we'd move it along. As you just said, we're so happy to see the writing that our students are doing. And I have to give a lot of thanks to Mrs. Olivera for really introducing the Lucy Caulkins model, working very hard with our teachers. As we've said, it doesn't happen overnight. The teachers have engaged in a lot of professional development, a lot of teamwork, et cetera, to make that happen, but those stories were amazing. And I think it just goes to speak to also the very talented, not only our staff, but the leadership that we have in the district. And with that, we, we are gonna follow up with announcing some other leaders that will be taking over. So as you know, Mrs. Heidi Brooks will be retiring at the end of this year. And while this is not about her tonight, we will celebrate her retirement and years of dedication to the district. Yes, Heidi, it's not about you tonight, sorry. But her dedication to the district. We are going to be announcing, and I'd like Mr. Porter and Ms. McHenry to come on up for a minute, please. So we are announcing, as you know, that Mr. Rick Porter will be assuming the principal position at Potter School. And he is delighted to have chosen Mrs. McHenry as his partner, as assistant principal. She'll be transferring from the Cushman School. When we were considering who to put in, following Heidi's wonderful reign, I did visit the school. I let them know that I'd be visiting the school and I invited the staff to come on in and, and talk to me about what they saw as the important pieces of leadership, how they saw the school have progressed, et cetera. And I would say the entire staff, even the custodians, came in to talk because they wanted to talk about not only Mr. Porter and his leadership style, but the partnership that Ms. Brook, Brooks and he have created over at Potter. And I told them that when I visited their staff and we decided it's a no-brainer, you know, Rick will be the principal. They talked a lot about the culture and climate that these two have really, really developed over at the school and to a T, every single one of them, without being unsolicited, said we'd love to see Rick Porter take over as the principal. So we were very pleased to see that. Rick's been a wonderful, obviously, partner in our leadership for the district. His passion and dedication to education and the children is next to none. And it was really a wonderful, wonderful choice to make. And with that, we, he then consulted with me about Mrs. McHenry, who has also, as you know, with her Cushman crayons, has done a fantastic job as the director of early ed over there. Same thing, her partnership, her work with our leadership team is, they're just a wonderful group of people and the dedication, the rule follower. She's a big rule follower. She's a, she's a big rule follower.
We'll change that.
Yeah. To make sure that every T is crossed and every I is dotted, to bring the best service that we can for our students. So they both decided, they've worked together before, I'm gonna let them talk a little bit about that, but we're very, very pleased to announce these two as taking over at Potter School.
So I guess unlike Katie.
I put you on the spot.
You did, you did. That's okay. Unlike Katie, who said tonight she did not have a scripted moment, when you came, we did have a scripted moment with staff. They had cue cards, they knew exactly what to say. Exactly, no. First of all, I just wanna say thank you to Dr. Gifford for her confidence in me as we make this transition of leadership. I actually started at the Potter School, it'll be thirty years ago this coming September. I started as a fifth grade teacher there, so. And I'm still here. So as I'm entering the very last part of my career, it's, it's humbling and it feels like coming full circle that I get the opportunity to be the principal of Potter School. When it came time to pick an assistant principal, Dr. Gifford, you mentioned it felt like a no-brainer. It felt like a no-brainer to me. As Dr. Gifford alluded to, Melissa and I worked together as assistant principals at the Quinn School and for two years, and I felt it was a very successful partnership. Melissa brings a load of experience as an assistant principal, early childhood, and she's gonna be a fantastic partner to work with. But as Dr. Gifford also mentioned, we have big shoes to fill. Heidi has left an indelible mark at Potter School. Her devotion to the community, to the kids, to the staff is gonna be a tough act to follow. But I feel that with Melissa by my side, we'll be up to the task. So thank you again.
Thank you. As the rule follower, it's a lot difficult, a lot more difficult not to have a script ready, but okay, I didn't know I was gonna be speaking tonight. But I, I truly feel blessed to have this opportunity to work again with Rick. I enjoyed my time with him at the Quinn School as assistant principal and can, and consider him a mentor. I really learned so much under him and, and we were both assistant principals at the time, but he really just, I feel like my administrative style is a lot to do with Rick. So I feel honored to be back with him and, and working again. My Cushman friends, I, I take the love of early childhood with me to Potter and look forward to working with grades K to five. But I have appreciated my time working with the little ones at Cushman and, and will continue to check in with them and, and make sure all is well and will miss those little ones running around. But I feel blessed to work at Potter and look forward to meeting the staff and getting to know the wonderful culture that I hear is over there. So again, thank you for the opportunity to transfer over and looking forward to next year.
Does anyone have any thing to add to that now?
Just a good move. Good.
I'd like to say, if I can, excuse me. I met some college friends earlier today. I guess we talk too much. I just think it's wonderful and I, first of all, two quality, quality people who will be joining forces at Potter School. My feeling has always been we should be training our administrators and promoting from within instead of bringing in new people all the time. I think we, we're doing that now and I think we need to continue to do it. It can't always be the case that we can promote from inside, but when you have quality people like we do in our system, like, this is a wonderful opportunity for these, for people to see that if they really wanna do something different within the system, those opportunities are there for them. So thank you and thank you to both Rick and Michelle and Melissa. And I've been doing that since I hired her when she came to Giddlet. Certainly Heidi, you are going to be missed. I missed you when you left me to go to Giddlet too, Potter, but you will be missed by so many, so many people, so we'll talk about that later.
Yes.
I'll just echo Dr. Kara Fotis' comments that I'm just thrilled that we're seeing more of growing our own talent and promoting from within. There was that period of time prior to Dr. Gifford coming on that we saw a lot of, you know, movement from outside of this district. And I agree, it's not something that, you know, we can always do. However, if the, if the shoe fits and it, it works for us, and in this case, I have nothing but respect for Mr. Porter. As a parent who's two, two students, two daughters, gone through, went through Potter School, they had nothing but a wonderful experience with Mrs. Brooks and Mr. Porter. And I know, like everyone else is, Mr. Porter, thank you. Mr. Porter. You know what I mean though, Rick. It was the right choice and I wish you nothing but the best. And congratulations to you as well, Melissa.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I think I'll just echo that as well and I just wonder if Melissa will get ready to be up on the roof or out somewhere and, you know, with fun and building up the, you know, the excitement of the kids doing some kind of crazy hijinks. And I look forward to seeing what that'll be. But certainly Heidi will be missed, but I have no doubt that Rick and Melissa will just do wonderful things. So thank you for taking on the, this opportunity. So thank you for announcing that. So next on our agenda, we have the, Mr. Kylie will be talking about our fiscal year 21 budget and presenting the, some things that are anticipated coming, you know, you gave us all our binders and we've looked at those, but if you could kind of talk a little bit about that with us.
Thank you. So Dr. Gifford and I are sort of teaming up on this presentation. It promises to be, let's see, probably more exciting than approval of minutes and public comment, but everything else tonight has been pretty wonderful, so. Dr. Gifford?
All right. So we just, obviously, we start every time we talk about the budget with the idea of what do we do to get it going, just so folks know. And again, we'll just breeze through this quickly as this is our first draft and we have more work to do, of course. But as you know, we always meet with our teams of folks, just trying to get that out of the way. I think we don't have it up there, right?
Jonathan, you have it up there.
Do we have it up there? Okay. I just, because I can't see where we are, but, so Jonathan, you'll have to help me out. We always bring folks back to the idea of what our mission statement is and our core core beliefs, so I'm not quite sure where we are from the mission statement. Okay, beautiful. Um, the core beliefs I think are important to remind folks because everything we do and we talk about the budget and what decisions we have to make come back to those things about developing our work ethic, uh, in the, with the students, the academic excellence, engaging in open communication, et cetera. As you know, we have a lot of good things going on and we still keep that saying up there, strong schools equals strong communities. And some of the things, we always like to highlight some of the things that we feel we're most proud of. And, um, right now, we have a 99.4% highly qualified teaching staff that increased a little bit. Um, as you know, we have a rich program of studies in the arts, theater, our, um, language programs, our phys, um, physical education and health and our athletics, et cetera, advanced placement, the increase that we've, uh, tried to increase the number of students taking advanced placement. Our programs for our students that are struggling, um, students might be struggling with disabilities or social emotional issues, et cetera. The increased involvement that we've had with STEM over the last few years, uh, we continue to educate our English language learners and, of course, a full-day kindergarten, not everybody has that. And the rich, rich offering that we have for professional development, the number of, um, offerings, the vast array of topics that we cover, et cetera. And of course, our award-winning music programs, our art programs, you just heard tonight about, um, the art students, et cetera. The nationally recognized spectrum, I could go on and on, our focus on our math and DECA programs and our, um, robotics and Legos and engineering. Our teachers work very hard with the PBIS and RTI models to try to support student success. We have a lot of therapeutic work going on in our district, once again, to focus on the social work and the, um, mental health issues. Most recently, we've added, again, um, this year, as you know, a BCBA, just added that person, um, some RBT and ABA services. And we continue, as you can see, when you hear the schools talk about, uh, these kinds of presentations, the community outreach that they have or the, um, connections that they have formed with folks in the community, their PTOs, et cetera. Uh, we've been really strong in our, creating more efficiencies in our processes, our paperwork, trying to reduce that, Michelle's really good at that. Um, and we've been working hard at securing some grants, most recently, the Project Lead the Way grant in the computer science area and the financial literacy one. So, with that said, you know, we have had our strategic plan in place over the last four years really, because it took the first year to really get started. And our focus areas or our goals, we're teaching and learning, access and equity and community engagement. We continue to focus in on those three major areas, updating our initiatives each year. We will be starting our new strategic planning process, once again, not to throw the baby out with the bathwater, but really take a hard look at what we have been doing and make any adjustments necessary, enhancements, um, and see what else we need to do to continue the work in that area. So, we will be, uh, just as a little announcement, we will be starting that process, uh, March 10th with a meeting, an all-day meeting. We even let the principals know, we had to cancel the first meeting. And, uh, they will be inviting folks from their schools to join that process and, um, we'll be getting that done. We are also, we'll be sending a survey out to the parents, that'll be coming out shortly in about a week or so, uh, to give us some feedback on how they see us working in the schools and anything that they might think, um, would be a good idea for, uh, changing what we're doing or at least enhancing. So, with that said, um, I'll just go over the guiding priorities, right, to let Mr. Kylie talk about the really important stuff, I guess, is how do we get there? How do we make it all work?
Thank you, Dr. Gifford. It's challenging, for sure. It's gonna be a fairly challenging budget year. This is FY '21. We are proposing a budget of $45,586,736. Seventy-five percent of our budget is spent on instruction. So, that's salaries of staff, principals, teacher assistants, substitutes, instructional staff, um, other instructional staff, instructional technology, professional development, special ed services, materials, supplies, so that's 75% of our budget. Other services, which represents the next biggest category, which is 11% of our budget, is transportation, attendance, health, athletics and other extracurricular activities. Maintenance and utilities is what it sounds like, custodial services, utilities, maintenance of the, of our aging buildings and grounds, that represents about 8% of our overall budget. The administration section, um, includes district administration, administrative technology and legal services, um, that's about 2% of our budget. Tuitions is about 4% of our budget, so those are tuition payments for out-of-district tuition. Um, and really, when I looked at this, they're fairly consistent, I'll talk a little bit on the next page about, um, a couple of things that changed. So, if you look at, um, the top line on this next page, instruction. So, instruction increased about 3.8%. So, that would be primarily due to contractual obligations for salaries, um, and Department of Ed, the Department of Ed reclassified, um, administrative technology and they changed the account number structure. So, you'll see on the administration line, it looks like a 13.2% decrease. That is largely be, really a bookkeeping, um, adjustment by the Department of Ed to move funds from, that would've been included, uh, previously in administration into the instruction line. Maintenance and utilities, pretty stable, again, just about $4,000 increase over last year. Other services, $121,000, primarily due to special needs transportation and some contractual obligations. And tuitions, up about 13.2%, $200,000. So, that, um, is based on our projections for next year for, um, for tuitions. So, for a total budget increase of 3.2%, $1,416,557. So, when I look at this budget, I think, um, that it's, sort of represents a, a level service budget. There's really not, and we'll talk on this page, budget recommendations about what we're changing, what we're proposing changing, but, um, really, we're looking to maintain all the good things that we, that we do now, um, as best we can and really, you know, focus on that level service. Some of that is because of the, we'll talk a little bit about what we didn't build into this budget in a minute, but I won't get ahead of myself. So, budget recommendations, um, it's become evident to us that we really do need to support technology in the district better than we are. You know, we've gone to the one-to-one initiative, it's, Jonathan's doing an amazing job trying to keep it up and running, but the, the fact is that, um, we just don't have enough people to manage all the technology that we have. It's a good problem to have that we have the technology, but we're very reliant on it. It's, it's a great tool that, that kids use and, you know, on a daily basis and to, um, be able to support it, we really needed to focus on that. So, we've built in an increase of one FTE for a computer technician, um, and we have proposed a reduction of two teacher assistant positions. So, they, they basically offset those two, um, those three positions, basically offset in terms of overall cost. The next page is what we didn't fund. So, there's a lot that, um, you know, we're, we're fortunate, we have very thoughtful, um, administrators in this district who put together great proposals for us to consider and, um, they spend a lot of time on it, a lot of energy in their buildings, um, you know, coming up with what they could do to improve. It's hard for us, and I think I can speak for all of us, that, you know, it's, it's challenging when we're not able to support, um, all of those increases, um, or any of them in some cases, unfortunately. But, um, there's a list here and I won't go through every item, uh, but there's some very valuable things that we could be doing that we're, you know, not able to fund in this 3.2% budget increase. The total requests not funded were, were $780,490. I'm sure the principals could've come up with another $780,490 without, you know, blinking an eye, that would've been valuable things for kids on top of this. So, they're really selective when they put, um, when they put forth proposals, um, and, and thoughtful about it. So, it is, it's difficult for us to not be able to support that. And, um, so I guess, you know, in summary, I think, you know, this is the first step in a fairly lengthy process, um, you know, we're working with the town to try and understand, um, exactly where they are with their budget process, but at this point, there's still some moving parts on their end. We're definitely above where the town thinks, uh, thinks we should be in terms of, um, an estimated allocation by hundreds of thousands of dollars. But, like I said, that is a bit of a moving target. In your binders, uh, there's lots of backup, you know, the detailed budget lines, obviously, I don't wanna bore, put everybody to sleep and go one by one through that, but, um, certainly tonight, uh, on March 9th, on March 23rd, when we have our public budget hearing and we can also have, you know, budget discussion and, you know, all the way through till town meeting, we can have more discussion about this and I, I anticipate we would. There's a lot of uncertainty right now, you know, built into this budget, obviously, we, we, um, you know, there are factors that, uh, we have yet to determine in terms of collective bargaining agreements, um, so that would be the, the biggest single item, of course, that, uh, you know, needs to hopefully get ironed out, uh, at some point in this process, but I'd be happy to discuss any of this with you, uh, at any time.
So, Gus?
Thank you, Dr. Gifford. Thank you, Mr. Kylie, for the presentation. Jim, when do we, when do we expect the final number or a, a closer number from the town side? I know it was just after our last budget subcommittee meeting, you had just recently got, I think, then, uh, a number and we know that, that that number's fluid right now. I had a number last Monday, a number that changed on Wednesday when we met for the budget subcommittee and then changed on Friday, um, when I put your packets together. So, three times last week. And I believe that the town's health insurance, um, percentage increase, I'm assuming it's an increase and not a decrease, um, is going to be finalized tomorrow, uh, so we'll have an idea. I, we've heard some numbers that, um, you know, are not the worst. I think I had maybe mentioned in the past that it was gonna be something in the range of 0 to 8%. And I think we're gonna be below average, hopefully, from what I hear, so. So, that, you know, it's still gonna be an increase, of course, but-
So, at this-
But so, so there are things, there are besides the health insurance, there are other things still that, that, obviously, the legislature, although I think the chapter 70 portion will not change significantly because of the legislature's involvement in, in, you know, creating the, the chapter 70 reform. I don't think that'll change a lot, but there are other factors that could change.
Yeah, the chapter 70 just didn't do us any good.
It, no, no. It was, gave us $30 per pupil.
And as we found out last week, we have the Student Opportunity Act that we now have to fill out.
Right. And we were already gonna get $30 per pupil, so. We got more paperwork and no benefit.
No money.
Right. That's unfortunate, but.
So, I, you know, I don't wanna sound the alarm right now, however, you said somewhere, you know, worth hundreds of thousands of dollars apart, is that, is that what you-
That's correct.
That's correct. To me, that's a little scary, um, because hundred thousand, hundreds of thousands of dollars in reality is you can only make up so much with, you know, supplies, supply items, um, you know, maintenance costs. Ultimately, it's gonna come down to, you know, I, I don't wanna say it, but positions, oh, it has the potential. So, a couple of things I, I just wanna mention and put out there, um, to everyone in the audience at home and in the audience here, is that after our last budget subcommittee meeting, I had, Terry Ham, the chair of the FinCom was there, her and I had a good conversation, you know, and I brought up my concerns, uh, to her, that Dartmouth does enjoy a low tax base, a low tax rate. And based on the numbers that we're looking at, year after year after year, I am seriously concerned about the long-term, um, impact of continuing to fund this. I, I don't think this is sustainable. The, these, these increases based on what we're, um, being offered in this town for, uh, this little, little new growth now.
Can I follow up? What is the new, what is the new growth? What are they estimating that?
It's minimal. It's, I, I don't, actually don't have an estimate, I hate to say it, but I don't have a current estimate, um, from the town.
It's gotta be some number though, right?
It is, it is some number.
Wait, we're only asking for 3.2, so is, so is new revenue growth less than .7%?
Yes.
It's less than .7%?
Yeah. And, you know, you gotta, you've gotta remember too, that, um, the, there are increases in other areas that are more than 2.5%. So, for instance-
We have the same problem.
Right.
Right? So, if there's 3.2% revenue growth, then we should get 3.2 and they should get 3.2, right? That's what I'm just wondering, what, that number is, is kind of important.
Yeah. It is, but, so if health insurance goes up, whatever, you know, 4%, that is more than the increase in the overall budget. So, it reduces the amount that can come to us, in theory. New Bedford Voak is going up 5%, so that reduces the amount that can come to us. Bristol Aggie's going up 202% with their, with their building. It's a small number compared to the other education budgets in town, but it still is going up 202%.
Right.
I mean, that's the several hundred thousand that we're apart right there.
Yeah. It is.
There's a new building for Bristol Aggie.
It is, yeah.
It's just the long-term prospect is, is concerning to, to me and I don't know what the answer is and, uh, you can circle back to me at the end, I'm sure my other colleagues would like to follow up.
So, I, I have one, I would like to see, Mr. Kylie, if it would be possible, some of the percent changes in those categories, as you said, are a reflection of moving things where they're reported around. It would be useful, I think, for me and maybe for the public to see what are the real changes, like if we kept it the same, do you know what I mean? Because some of the changes look artificial and so if we had kept things categorized the way they were, what, how would spending change in each category? Which I don't need to see that now, but I think just conceptually, that might help me and I don't know, maybe some other people, um, understand. Um, I wanna reiterate, uh, Mr. Oliver's point, right, as you, the document notes, we're in the bottom 13% of per pupil spending, right? And if we were at the state average, we'd have about $10 million more, right? Even halfway there, right, gives us a lot more breathing room. And I agree that I don't think this model is, is sustainable right now and I'm, I'm seriously concerned, um, about, about, I mean, we're doing the best that we can with what we have, but you can only get blood from, I mean, there's only so much blood you can get from a stone, there's just not anything there. I have a few other questions, but I'll let everyone else say things too.
Go ahead. You want me to? Okay, that's fine, I'm good. Yeah, uh, oh, uh, yeah, it's-
I could've said that.
Yeah, it's, it's exactly what it is though. The per pupil is $2,500 and you're, you're pretty close to the 10 million, Shannon.
I did, I used a calculator, I can do it in my brain like you, Mr. Yance.
No, I could, no, no, I used the calculator too, 'cause that cuts the big numbers, but $8,968,399.64 with the pupils that we had.
I did the industry, so you probably did the overall.
You know, so, but that's-
What is that?
That's the difference if we were at the state average.
Oh.
Okay, then we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to sit here and have all these wonderful discussions. We would be, it would be wonderful. We need help, as dumb as that sounds and, and such, and I, I think it goes, it goes two places. It goes, uh, to our state legislatures and I'm a broken record on this, so I won't say too much about it, but that, you know, $1.5 billion, uh, and I talked about it a little bit at the, at the last meeting with, uh, you know, where the money all went, to the other, uh, you know, the gateway communities and such and vocational schools and we get nothing type of deal. And, uh, also, I think, you know, in, in all seriousness, I think our town fathers, uh, need, need to do some looking at, at how they budget things, you know, with, uh, receipts and, and that type of deal. I know we're, you know, I don't, not trying to shoot ourselves in the foot, you know, comes up, you know- know, comes, you know, September, October, at the fall town meeting, with what they're able to do with the surplus revenue and capital items and everything else, and I greatly appreciate what, what we get, but we have to be able to operate on a day-to-day basis with, you know, staff and pens and pencils and things of that nature type of deal, so I think they need to do that. And I think, in just a personal opinion, a couple of the expense things that they do, I think they have to look at kind of putting it to the wayside, I mean, to, you know, be increasing the OPEB liability funding every year, I mean, we're putting money into it, that's great, you know, but we've got to be able to operate, too, so...
Drop in the bucket, too.
It's a drop in the bucket with a 50-plus million dollar liability, I got, listen, it's still better than I was in Far River, but that's beside the point. But I think what you have to do is, you know, you've got to be living for today, I mean, we've got things that we've got to do today, and, you know, we're, we're trying to hold a budget together with bailing wire and chewing gum, and we're, you know, I think very shortly, and we're going to be in big trouble trying to do that. I commend Central Office Administration and all the administrators for the work they done, they did, I appreciate the conservatism, I, without a doubt, with what Mr. Kylie said, that 700,000 could have been a million and a half or $2 million without batting an eyelash, and we're, you know, we're not getting anywhere, so we've got a long road to hoe here, I think. Thank you for the work, it is appreciated, and does not go out unnoticed.
Very appreciative. I don't have that much to say, except how discouraging it has been all these years that we've had to fight every time for money for the schools. This isn't anything new, this is historical, and I don't know, I know even the past, we've put out there information and charts, but it seems like we need to keep on doing that so people can see where our spending is compared to other communities our size, because I was just looking at social media before I came out tonight, which probably wasn't a good thing to do. But it's the same old, same old arguments again and again, you know, that why would teachers need more money? There's no appreciation, really, by some people of what teaching really is, and the sacrifices our teachers make, and our administrators, and anyone that works in the school department to provide quality education to our students, and I just hope there's a way we can get the information out there. I think there are certainly more parents today that understand the need than probably 30 years ago, or 40, but it's a continuous problem, and when you look at if we only could get to the state average, what a difference that could make. So I want to thank our administration and certainly our staff, and also, Mr. Kylie, for the way you put a budget together, because, you know, there are some business agents who are just looking at the numbers, but you don't just look at the numbers, you look at the people and the students, and it's the same for, you know, all of our administrators. So I just thank you for all the work you've done.
Chris, you had some more?
Yeah, I'll continue going.
Please do.
So, the way I see this, I agree, we need to do better, we need to do better for our town, we need to do better for our kids, we need to do better for our staff, and the schools in Dartmouth, you know, you could very easily tie in property values to the wonderful school system that we have in Dartmouth. That being said, there's two ways that we can, we can fix this. The state can come up with a different formula, we can get more money from the state, right, or we've got to ask for an override. And as much as I would love to see an operational override, several years ago, I'm sure Mr. Nunes remembers this, this town voted to close schools, then go for an override. So that is concerning to me, but the reality is, we cannot continue to operate Dartmouth Public Schools long-term, that's my, just speaking for myself, my personal opinion, looking at the numbers that Mr. Kylie has shared, long-term, with the revenue that is being offered to us from this town. I wish there was an easy answer, but there, there really isn't, we've managed to help out a little bit with school choice, you know, take the edge off, but that's nowhere, nowhere near, nowhere near enough from where we need to be, and I agree that I think it's time that the town government really takes a hard look fundamentally at how we're operating this town.
Shannon?
So, I mean, I agree, I do think there are two places we can look, and I agree with Mr. Nunes, you know, Proposition 2 and 1/2 came in, unlocked our property taxes in at a low rate, and then Ed Reform came in...
We had just reformed, we had just revalued.
Right, and so, I mean, ultimately, we can say we want more money from the state, but it's not going to come from the state, because we are not putting in the effort that the Ed Reform bill expects communities to put in, and so the way they're getting communities towards where they should be with their effort is to give them lower increases as compared to other communities, so that they step up to the effort that they should be making. It's unfortunate that we're between a rock and a hard place, because we're not going to get it from the state legislature, and you're right, I don't, you know, it's frustrating, I don't know what to do. I do have a question related to, and I'm trying to remember, Dr. Gifford mentioned full-day kindergarten, right now, everyone has that, and it's, I remember the creation of that way back when, but it's just kind of part of what we do now. Is that stab fund still there?
Yeah.
It's not going to help our operational, right, sort of problems, but I don't know why we still have that stabilization fund. One, I can't imagine any of us ever voting to get rid of full-day kindergarten, or to start charging parents for that, I just, it's just part of what we do. Two, whatever's in that stabilization fund would get us through for a year before we were faced with the same hard choice again, right? I mean, there's what, six, $700,000 in there?
About 300.
That's, I mean, I don't know why, it's like sitting there kind of doing nothing, and I think that's something...
Just waiting for the year.
It's, again, it cannot be moved into our operating budget, because it's a one-time source of revenue, and we set us up for disappointment if we build that in, but I do think we ought to look at getting rid of that stabilization fund and moving that money into capital for whatever, for whatever purposes, because it's just, I mean, I don't, I just don't really know why it's there anymore. It's a symbol, and in this day and age, I don't think this community can afford to just have symbols, and we need to, I think we should put that money to use. So I'd like to see us maybe explore that topic, I don't know, with the select board or the town manager, I just, I just don't think it makes much sense anymore.
Ms. Nunes?
John?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair, or Mr. Kylie, or Dr. Gifford, to follow up on Shannon's, that's our, quote unquote, that's our money, our stabilization fund, so it would just take a request from us to, like, in the fall, when this, this, the town does all its capital stuff to release that 300,000 to give us some capital money to do something?
I think it would...
Versus staying out, keeping it out of the operating budget?
I think it would require a town meeting vote.
It would require a town meeting vote, there's no doubt on that, but we should be the ones that would be able to ask versus the board.
Yeah, I think, I think that's correct, yeah, yeah. I can, I can certainly at the...
Yeah.
I can certainly at the next committee meeting provide the language of the formation of the, of the stabilization fund itself, which, you know, might help, I think, I think it might help clarify a little bit, but, but, yeah, I think it would be up to you to do that, I mean, I would definitely not recommend doing that solving our operating problems in any way.
No, but it just goes on my mind talking about it.
Yeah, it, the only thing that it could be used for would be, you know, if something really bad happened economically, you know, it could bridge a gap of a year at some point.
A year, then we're a year, we're making the same bad decision.
Right.
Right, it doesn't, there's not enough in there to really do anything to get us through a recession.
No.
Get us through one year of a recession.
Maybe.
Most recessions last longer than a...
Yeah.
Wouldn't even do that.
Well, thank you for that. So our public hearing is March 9th on this, and then you said tomorrow, they're going to have a...
Actually, our public hearing is March 23rd.
I mean, 23rd.
So...
So our next meeting, okay, so we, okay.
Yeah, so our next meeting will be for discussion, or, you know, further consideration, or anything that you think of along the way that you'd like to, you know, like me to look at and get more information for you, if you think of something between now and then, I'd be happy to put it together and bring it forward for you. And I would assume that I will have a revised estimate, because I had a estimate from the town of their financial projection, but I didn't include it in your packet, because I knew by the time I was putting your packet together that it was incorrect, and I didn't want it, it wasn't right to include it, so I'm awaiting that, but I'm assuming with the whole health insurance numbers coming out, we'll get one hopefully quickly following that, so...
That moving target, is that typical, or is that just more moving this year than in past years?
It's always a moving target, of course, the legislature sometimes...
Yeah.
We're actually probably closer to the number legislature-wise than usual, just because they were involved in the whole Ed, you know, the whole reform of the chapter 70 number, whereas that's not usually the case, and it's some debate between, you know, how far they're going to get away from the governor's number, but, so that number is probably better. Health insurance is a little late this year, in terms of the number, so that, that doesn't help us, but, and there's a few other things, I think, that are out there. I usually have a pretty good number at the governor's, you know, when the governor comes out, I usually have a projection from the town that's fairly close, and sometimes even before that, but not so this year, so...
Okay, thank you very much for all of this detail.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. So next on our agenda, we have consent, a consent agenda where Dr. Gifford is recommending approval of the field trip requests that you have in your packets. One is for the Dartmouth High School Music Department, permission to participate in the All-State Music Festival in February 28th through March 2nd, is that correct, date? 2020?
Yep.
At Symphony Hall in Boston, and then a request for the Dartmouth High School to participate in the YMCA Youth and Government Annual Model, Model Legislative, Model Government Conference to be held at the State House on March 18th through March 20th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Good luck to everybody.
Yeah, good luck to everyone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, that's unanimous. All right, so next on our agenda, some old business we had brought up before, John Nunes and I met with Dr. Gifford recently to go over this paper here, the, to discuss, like, indicators that would be included in the superintendent evaluation, and so, I don't know, Dr. Gifford, if you wanted to...
Did we check them off on there?
I don't see them checked off on here.
Okay, so let's do that.
I'm going to check my notes, okay.
So with, one of the things we discussed was, we went, when I met with Mr. Nunes and Ms. Amor, we looked at the goals that you had all approved prior, the four goals, and then we just chose indicators of that would best represent accomplishment of those, or at least progress toward achieving them. If you recall, when we went to the conference presented by Desi, it was recommended that the committees choose six to, six to eight. When we chose them, we went a little bit over, because it's kind of, it's kind of hard to pull it out, and even though we choose them, they're kind of the focused areas, but you can always, we can always talk about anything else, and so, anyway, so we, we chose under standard one, under B, student engagement and meeting diverse ner, needs, say nerves, it almost came out, B1 and 3. Under standard 2, we chose under, the whole C, everything in C about time for teaching and learning, and time for collaboration. And standard 3, student support and family support, under B. And under standard 4, we chose D, continuous learning of staff and administrators, and E, shared vision development. And if you look through the whole packet we sent you, you've had it before, anyway, the entire rubric, they give examples of what that looks like, as you know, you've been through this before. So we don't really need a vote, per se, but a discussion if you want, and just a consensus that folks would focus on that.
Chris?
I have no complaints, no, with these indicators, these, these are fine, they're acceptable to, you met with, you and Mr. Nunes met with Dr. Gifford, so I have nothing.
Was there anything in addition to, or that you see that might, as, as Dr. Gifford mentioned, we were going through them, looking at the goals, and sort of one kind of leans into the other, and so it was a collaborative process, it was kind of, you know, this just came out of our discussion, and I, I always emphasize that I feel very fortunate that a lot of what we're doing, hence with the spotlight on the students and people coming in and talking, that the administrators coming in, talking about district improvement plans and school improvement plans, we're really privy to that information as it, as it, throughout the year, so it was easy to kind of think of, of things related, and, yeah, and, but by all means, if anyone sees an indicator that you feel...
I just noticed I did miss under 4A, two, mission and core values.
Yeah.
I forgot that one. I think I missed it, I think I did say it.
I'm like cheating off of Mr. Oliver.
I thought I saw you kind of looking over there.
These things are so confusing to me, I feel like I need a PhD in figuring out...
Well, I attended the meeting with Dr. Gifford, where Desi and the Mass Association for School Committee did a great job...
They did.
Talking us through what each meant, and I still feel overwhelmed, because it's, it's a lot, but it's really, it's really simple, it's really what you're doing, and what's coming out of what we're doing, and...
And that's the other thing we talked about, was these kinds of meetings, you see what's happening, so, you know, it's like a check, yep, we're doing that, we're focusing on this, we're focusing on that, so, it's helpful, these, the meetings, I think. Yes.
Just to keep in mind that we're only doing one person, our administrators are doing many, many...
Exactly, right. It's a huge undertaking for folks in the trenches.
Look at you putting your administrator hat on.
Yeah, no, it's just to point that out.
True that, great, all right. So no vote, per se, just a consensus.
Everybody's aware, and, okay.
Good, very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Let's see. So under new business, we have the policy revisions, Assistant Superintendent Michelle Roy is here to kind of go over policies, JB, JFABD, and JFABF, is that it? Yeah, okay.
So you might, you might remember, last May, we, we undertook the review of some of our policies related to educational stability, homeless, foster care, military families, in advance of the desk review that the Department of Ed was, was doing of those policies. So they suggested four minor tweaks. So on the equal educational opportunities, I don't know if your scan has color?
It does.
So in the third paragraph, included in the groups, right after homeless, they suggest we add foster care.
Okay.
On the second policy, related to homeless students, and I think this is my mistake, they had actually suggested extracurricular activities, and I think for some reason I had missed adding that...
Okay.
...in the first paragraph, and in the paragraph, second paragraph from the bottom, homeless students continue to be enrolled in their school origin and receive transportation, we do that, that's, that's our practice, they just added it as an explicit edit to that policy. And in the third one, which was a new policy, students in foster care, when we got the feedback on this, they wanted us to add preschool, and so we added it to the title, but they suggested we also, in addition to the title, add it to... But they suggested we also, in addition to the title, add it to the first paragraph. So appropriate public education preschool through high school graduation. So those are the four minor tweaks they'd like us to update based on the desk review.
Okay, and this is just a first read?
First read, we'll need a second read. They did say that they would take the policies as implemented pending your vote, so.
Okay.
We're in alignment with their timeline.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yes.
So I just have one question about JFABD. I've never seen extracurricula activities. Is there supposed to be an R there?
No.
I've never seen it as with an A. I've always seen it extracurricular. So if we could just look at that, that's just a describing. I've, I've just never seen it that way, so I Googled it to see if I was wrong, like, and I couldn't find it on Google either. So I, maybe they have a special way of using that word. But grammatically, I've never seen it without the R, you pluralize activities, not dropping the R to make extracurricular plural, so. Just wanted to check that.
Could be just the state's way of doing business.
Dramatically incorrect way, yes.
Even as guessing.
So that's it, yep.
Okay.
The, the homeless students, you know, receiving transportation, that's basically the McKinney Vento, am I correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep, the only did, the only thing they did was separate recently, probably in the last year or so, students awaiting foster care are no longer considered homeless. So they separated them out. That's the only change they made to the McKinney Vento Act under ESA.
Yes.
One more quote for Mr. Kylie, I'm just saying. Not that they probably have, but is the state fully funding McKinney Vento?
No.
No, I didn't think so, but I was, I was hoping, I was hoping, okay.
And by not fully funding, what would that percentage be, Mr. Kylie?
For next year, you know, I, I'll get back to you on it.
Okay, but it's low.
I didn't mean to blindside you, I apologize.
No, no, it is, just a portion.
I was actually gonna ask what our enroll, what our numbers are. Do we know what our numbers are this year?
I believe we have two that are, who live in district, who attend Dartmouth Home Schools, and sixteen that would cost share.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No, well, thank you. All right, next on our new business, we have, Mr. Kylie will talk about the stabilization fund discussion and vote.
Thank you, so this is really for your consideration. We had, when we built the FY twenty budget, built in a provision for settling collective bargaining agreements. We have not settled some of those collective bargaining agreements. If the funding, if the agreements are not settled and by, by June thirtieth, the funds would be returned to the town. At that point, it would require, if we were to settle some contract at some later date, it would require going to town meeting and requesting funding. That seems risky to me. We have the funding sitting untouched in our FY twenty budget. And what I'd at least like you to consider is asking for, asking the town to create a stabilization fund in which I could deposit those funds directly into that stabilization fund. And if, so if we settle before, before then, I won't deposit the money. We can withdraw the article if it's before town meeting. If it's, if it's voted at town meeting and then we settle and it's still not June thirtieth, I don't need to deposit the money. It, so we have some flexibility to still hopefully settle this contract before then. But the, the important issue with discussing this tonight and probably only tonight because March ninth, I think, is probably too late, is that if it's not on the warrant, then it's not gonna be created. So if it's not gonna be on the warrant for town meeting, this can't be created. And then the money just goes back to the town. It would be uncertain as to whether we could ever, you know, get that money back. So it would be a, it would be to settle contracts with the DEA and DAA. So reserve funds for that purpose. So we create a stabilization fund specifically for collective bargaining settlements for the schools. There's some discussion that I've already had with the town side of government. They have a stabilization fund that they created to settle collective bargaining agreements. It is specific to the town side of government. We're not quite sure whether it makes more sense to have town meeting vote to expand that existing stabilization fund or have our own. The, the downside of combining it is that the money's combined. I trust them and I don't think that that would be a problem. So, but that's still to be determined. But basically tonight, I'd like you to consider requesting a article be placed on town meeting to create a stabilization fund that would fund a future collective bargaining settlements.
Thank you. Chris?
So Mr. Kylie, we're essentially voting to send this to the select board to be placed on the warrant.
My, my next, yes, and my next step would be that if you were to do so tonight, to talk to the town administration tomorrow, let them know. And we, I'd work with them to craft language that would be, you know, placed on, brought before the selectmen and then hopefully placed on the warrant for town meeting.
Thank you.
Shannon?
I don't have a problem with that. How would, once we've deposited it, what's the mechanism for taking it out, assuming that we would like to settle, right? Does it require a vote of us or a vote at a town meeting? How does that money come out?
Requires a vote at town meeting, that's the downside.
Okay.
I think, but.
I mean.
I mean, accessing any stabilization fund requires a vote at town meeting. So the timing of that settlement would then, if we were to settle July first, it would have been a benefit because it would have, it would have reserved those funds in place for that purpose. However, we might not be able to access them until October.
Which wouldn't be the end of the world because you're just spending out of a salary account and that salary account wouldn't run out so much later in the year.
Well, the problem that I would have
Yeah.
is that I would be unable to spend two thousand twenty-one funds, so I would have a two thousand twenty-one budget.
Right.
But I can't spend that money on the two thousand twenty settlement. So I can't float it like that.
Okay.
I actually need the stabilization money in order to do that. So our auditors wouldn't, you know, it's, it wouldn't be appropriate to spend twenty-one money on twenty. So I think there are some problems with it. But I think that those difficulties outweigh the fact that the money goes back to the town and we essentially lose the ability to control that funds, those funds entirely at that point.
I just have another question, right? FinCom has a reserve fund. Like, how does that work and can we set up a mechanism like that instead? Right, because that just requires a vote of FinCom to, to spend that through the year, we can't do anything like that?
No, there's no legal mechanism by which we can, we can do that, no.
Good.
I like the idea, though.
What?
I like the idea, though.
Well, can they do that? I mean, we'd have to get a commitment from the town, but I'm just worried, right, that we settle in August and we've got no way to get teachers their back pay.
It's contingent upon town meeting.
Right, but we, town meeting doesn't happen until October.
Exactly.
Right, so now they've, they're, they're stuck without back pay if we settle in August, just for, you know, giggles, talking about that. Right? I just, you know what I mean? I'd like to avoid that, right?
That's collective bargaining if we don't settle.
Yeah, I know, but.
There's no way to, to do that, though. We wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't, the, the money in the, in the FinCom reserve fund is appropriated by town meeting at, at the annual town meeting for the operating budget. It's specific to that year. It's, we can't transfer money to them, like, and put it, it's not a reserve account either. It's operating budget of money. So we, we can't really do that. This is the only means that I can think of to have any control of this money beyond June thirtieth. That's why I think it's worthy of consideration, but.
I just don't think there's much choice we have. I think we have to vote to do that. I mean, we don't wanna give the money back to the town.
Right.
I mean, we're really being big problems.
Been there, done that.
Carol's feisty tonight.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Mr. Kylie and central admin to, to set, to set up and, but make it a separate one under the school. Sorry, I, at least we know what it, what's there and it doesn't get commingled and accidentally overspent. So with that, Madam Chair, if you'd like, I'll be glad to make a motion that the school, the school committee requests the Board of Selectmen to set up and place on the June Special Town Meeting Warrant, an article to set up a stabilization fund for the school committee in the amount of up to six hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the purposes of not unsettled collective bargaining agreements.
I'll second that.
Does that work, Mr. Kylie?
That works perfectly.
Do we get interest on that?
Yep.
With such luck. We, we actually would get interest on it, yeah.
Very little.
Hopefully, hopefully we won't have it long.
Yeah.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstention?
I will abstain.
Okay, abstention? Yeah. Oh, yes. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next we have superintendent's update.
Oh, good, okay. Just a couple of things, as we've talked a lot about all of this already, but we just wanna send a big thank you to the bus drivers and maintenance department for last Friday. Once again, they and with the principals manning the booths at, at school and walkie talkies going and we got everybody safely home. It took some time, but the trees falling, all of that, but, but once again, they did a nice job for us. Continue to keep your eye on the Facebook page as we continue to put some nice things about our students. One, we had Emma Souza and Jack Sullivan honorary student athletes for Southeast Conference were recognized. And students, other students were recognized, Erin Good, Lindsay Olivera, and Sarah Walts. And that was for Girls and Women and Sports Day. So just a couple of nice things, just like I said, continue to watch the Facebook page. Ms. Olivera and I decided to take a leap and started doing a podcast with the help of Mr. Parati. So we posted our first one on the YouTube channel that they use and we're, we've invited folks to give us ideas for topics to talk about and a name for the podcast. So our next guest will be Mr. Tebow. We've already promised that he will have a spot in our next podcast, so we're gonna do a couple a month, but it's fun. And I guess Mr. Parati told me that we, we had students editing it and one is already inspired to do their own, so that was good. We did something good. Pre-K applications are out, as we said, and available for folks and K registrations are open, so those are starting to come in. As you know, we had our PD early release day last week and that went well as usual. Lots of our teachers and, and other admin folks presented some of the PD sessions. Some of the topics, innovation and technology, innovator's mindset, engaging all students, special education inclusive practices, responding to child abuse, and no such thing as a bad kid on SEL. So tons and tons of sessions, folks had the opportunity to attend. I'd let you know that we secured the financial literacy grant and I don't think I told you that we were just awarded the Project Lead the Way grant for our computer science pathway. So that will involve some professional development in that and we're excited for that. We had applied for the engineering as well, but we didn't get that one. And we kind of heard that folks that applied for two, they were only granted one, but we'll try again next year. Camp Invention registration is open, it's already fast, it's quickly filling up. And as you might not know, but we have started the direct, the process to hire a new director of music. And Ms. Roy is leading that charge and the team, which includes Mr. Noons, met already to review the applicants and the interviews will be taking place soon. And obviously, we will be doing the same with Ms. McHenry's position now that we've made that public. That will be getting posted shortly. And this morning I met with, I was able to come on into the high school and students signed up during the pace period like they do, so I decided to do superintendent chat. So I had some sign up and Mr. Tebow, I just want to let you know, I had students email me after, found out about it and are looking forward to the next one, so we'll see. So we had a good time chatting about things. And that's it.
Great, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is a report of the chair. I really don't have anything to add between what Brendan Rego described was happening around the high school and around our community and what you've shared, but I did wanna bring something up under other matters. Something that came to my attention after the posting of the agenda and as a chair, I just wanted to bring it to you and I would be open to discussion around us considering as a school committee related to an earlier topic around an override that if we would entertain, and I know possibly Shannon might be willing to add a little bit more to this, but discussion around considering a vote to support us as a committee potentially voting to sending non-binding referendum to the select board that they consider an override.
For health insurance.
For health insurance.
Yeah, I see.
So I'm.
Yeah, I, I wholeheartedly agree and support that. Time is running short if they're going to do anything. I finally got a chance to watch the portion of this, their meeting that they had, the discussion and such at their last select board meeting. And all they talked, all, you know, Mr. Barnes and Mr. McGinnis talked about, and did a very nice job talking about what the cost would be and the amounts they needed and that type of deal. But there was no other discussion from the board and they just went right on, you know, next item on the agenda, waterways and away they went, type of deal. I mean, they're meeting tonight, it's not on their agenda, they're not meeting now till the beginning of March. I, I don't know what they're doing, I, I honestly don't. You know, we need, the town needs, you know, everybody needs an answer. Are we going, are they going to put one on, are they going? So maybe this letter will kind of push them in that direction to light a fire.
Yeah. Anyone else, Shannon?
So I would support such a resolution. The only thing that I would say is my one concern is, is I think that is insufficient, right? As an override, as we've talked about, our schools are not sufficiently funded. My concern is, don't get me wrong, I one hundred percent support this, but that if we go to the well on this, then the well will be dry sort of long term in terms of what the true needs of the schools are. So I, I don't, I don't know, like, you know what I mean? I wanna support this and I think we need this. I think we need an even, even bigger override. I mean, I think there are, there are other issues that we need to address. That having been said, I, I think I would vote in support of this with perhaps a note that we need to consider sort of also the long term along with this short term measure.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add to Dr. Jenkins that I think I would vote in favor of this as well. I see absolutely no harm in putting this out to the voters in town. I, I don't see why we waited, why they've waited so long. The little, little to no discussion that took place at the last meeting, I think it was frustrating to many of us. And to be quite honest with you, I do not see the harm with putting this out to the voters and let the voters decide. I do agree that, you know, I wish, I wish it could be more, but I think at the very least, we, we gotta at least try to get this through to support all the staff in, in town. we, we've got to at least try to get this through to support all the staff in, in town.
Carol?
Of course, I would support something like this. I just don't know are there any other options? Is there anything else that can be done? It seems like that's the only way we can go, is an override.
Yeah, look to Jen.
The only, and, and Mr. Nunes alluded to it, is, you know, looking at a shifting of priorities in terms of expenditure.
But that has, we have no control over that.
We do not, we do not, no. It's definitely the town side of government's responsibility. So, we, we don't. But then again, we don't really have control over the override either, so. We could probably, I mean, I think, I think the school committee is a very important body in, in town, and, you know, I'm sure that the select board and finance committee would be interested in, you know, whatever you have to say. So, I, if an override isn't something that they're, you know, going to entertain, then maybe a shifting of priorities would be. It wouldn't hurt to try, I guess.
Do you have a comment?
No, I just, yeah, and, you know, shifting of priorities, it just, you know, we're, yeah, we're grateful for what they give us. But I too have been stuck in that perusing the social media, and it's really discouraging to see comments around the use of, of technology as being a babysitter for students in the classroom, and it's so far from what's actually happening. I would, I would interject that it makes teaching more complex and complicated, and that topped with trying to get students to a place where they can achieve their greatest potential. Using those tools are necessary in the times we're in, you know? This isn't sixty years ago, seventy years ago. I mean, education has changed and shifted, and no easier, much more complex to really maintain a system in a classroom that allows students to learn and achieve. And so, yeah, I think it's really important that there is, in that focus, a shift in priorities, because we need this money. We are in the lowest, you know, in the very low percentage of what we pay. You know, we talk about Dartmouth pride, and we talk about, you know, all of our students matter, and it's the, the, you know, any future leader starts as a student in a classroom, anyone. And, and so I just don't understand the reluctance to really accept the fact that we have a low tax base. And yes, not everybody makes a lot of money. Some people, many people live week to week, you know? Life is complex, but our students are our future, and I guess that's my comment to this. And I would certainly support this, and I hear what you're saying, as that is, it, I wouldn't want it to be limited, but Shannon, go ahead.
So, I'll make a motion that we pass a resolution to request that the select board at their next meeting take up the issue of and support a request for an override, so the town can increase its contribution to healthcare for town, school and town employees.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any, no?
Yeah, was.
Thank you.
That's something we want to individually sign, or just?
I think so. Was that, how that would?
I mean, but versus, I mean, with it coming from us, do you want it?
I think that would be a good idea.
If we just all individually signed it, you know, when it's ready, type of deal, let us know?
I think so. Right?
Yeah.
What's the deadline for getting that in?
We missed tonight's meeting, so it's got to be before their next meeting.
Their next meeting is March, March third or March tenth, I'm not sure.
I think it's the ninth.
I think it's March third.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, because they, they, I think they canceled the one, like, two weeks from tonight. And then they're going back to back, so I think they're going to March third and March tenth.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for that. And with that, since I, I didn't have a report, does anybody else have any other updates on things going on in the, in our district?
Two quick things, Madam Chair. Number one, good luck, DECA students are headed to the states the end of the month, the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, twenty-seven, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth up in Boston. I think there's thirty-two or thirty-four of them. And, you know, hopefully they'll do as well there as they did down in Hyannis, the beginning of January. And Brendan was kind enough to mention our indoor percussion and color guard show on the twenty-second. Doors will open at noon time. Our junior varsity goes on at one twenty-eight. Our varsity goes, scheduled to go on just after three thirty. And the vars, the color guard awards will be right after that, you know, quarter of four, type of deal. And then the percussion groups will take over, and our percussion closes out the night just after, you know, seven twenty or so. And awards will be right after, so, you know, come and enjoy the kids. There's some thirty, last time I looked, there were almost forty groups between the two, the two groups coming, so.
Wow, great, looking forward to it.
Everybody have a good, safe vacation.
Yeah. Yes. Next week, vacation. Forgot about that. We've all been sick. I lost track of, of the weeks and the dates. So, our next meeting, our next regularly scheduled meeting of the school committee is Monday, March ninth, six thirty here, streaming live. And with that, I will entertain a motion to, I will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to provide an update with respect to collective bargaining, bargaining with union personnel, not to return to open session.
So, move.
Second.
All right, roll call. Kathleen Emerald?
Yes.
Chris Oliver?
Yes.
Shannon Jenkins?
Yes.
Carol Carafodas?
Yes.
John Nunes?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.